This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and we are calling this special Town Council meeting to order. It is currently 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 6, 2022. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance, with Ms. George joining us virtually. First up, or next up, I should say, we will have Item 3A, Interview for Board in Commission, and I apologize ahead of time if I mispronounce your names.[41.29][41.29](Laughter) Michael LeHugh is seeking reappointment to the Board of Rec. He is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Board of Rec. His term would run from January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2024. Mr. LeHugh has served on the Board of Rec since September of 2020. Mr. LeHugh's attendance in his first term has been reliable, missing one meeting with notice. The Board of Rec currently has one alternate member vacancy available.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you tell us about your time on the Board of Rec and why you're seeking reappointment?
Well, yeah, in the two years that I've been on the board, I've participated in the various meetings and have been able to assist in helping make some of the decisions that the Board has moved forward with, and I would like to continue that engagement.
Thank you. I will open up to council members for questions or comments.
I think I remember when you would come before us two years ago, you're playing in the band, don't you?
I still do.
You do? Okay. That's why I remember you. Thank you.
It's, that Board is a very active Board. A lot of the newer members we've put on have actually started taking very active roles into bringing new programming in, so. And we have a new director, so.
That's right.
Is there anything you feel that the Town Council could do to help support the Board of Rec any better?
Well, Tammy has been very engaged as the council liaison and, you know, has, you know, and I think, you know, we had some meetings where some, you know, where there were some changes that need to be addressed, and Mary attended that meeting that we had and was very engaged. So I think, you know, at this point, the council has been very helpful.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? I'd like to thank you for the past two years you've served, and thank you for seeking reappointment. It's always great when people are volunteering to help out their community. We will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kyle Sodora, who is seeking reappointment to the Permanent Building Commission. Mr. Sodora is interested in being reappointed as a regular member of the Permanent Building Commission. His term would run from December 16, 2022, through December 15, 2026. Mr. Sodora has served on the Permanent Building Commission since 2010 as an alternate. He became a regular member in January of 2015. Mr. Sodora's attendance has been consistent, with no absenteeism during his recent, this recent term. Permanent Building Commission has one alternate member vacancy available. Welcome. If you could, just tell us a little bit about your time and on a Permanent Building Commission and why you're seeking reappointment.
When that was done, I stayed on because it seemed like a waste to let the experience that I had gained not go to use. Personally, myself, being in the mechanical trades, it's very helpful to, and our commission has this, we have tradespeople, to understand the systems and equipment that we use, because it's what I use. It's what I do.
All right, thank you. I will open up to council members. Comments, questions?
I'll just comment that I'm the liaison of the Permanent Building Committee, and Kyle's a very important member of that committee there. Like you said, all the other ones each have their own kind of trade that they did for their work, so it helps them along with the building projects in school that are coming, in the town that are coming along.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
You guys are quite busy at this point in time. We got how many irons in the fire right now?
Well, two.
Two majors.
A bit challenging, as I'm sure you can imagine, with a pre-inflation budget and, you know, trying to make things work. So we're doing the best we can.
Any other comments, questions? Again, I'd just like to say thank you for your time, that you volunteered for the community, and thank you for looking to continue to help the community out. And I know you guys do have a lot going on right now with these two projects, so hopefully you can get through them as smoothly as possible and with as many, as few hiccups as possible along the way, because I understand that, you know, as you said, the fact that we budgeted for this pre-all this inflation and now we're dealing with the ramifications of all the inflation on everything. So we will be voting on your reappointment next Tuesday. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up on the agenda is Item 3C. William Mengy is seeking reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. His term would run from February 1, 2023, through January 31, 2028. Mr. Mengy has served on the Zoning Board of Appeals since April of 2016. He has missed one meeting with notice in this most recent term. The Zoning Board of Appeals has one regular member and three alternate member vacancies available. Welcome, and thank you for coming. Can you tell us a little bit about your time on the ZBA and why you're seeking reappointment?
Well, I originally joined seeing there's always been a lack of members, as it was. I'm in the construction field as well, so you always see the demand of, I mean, I've been to several meetings in the past before work where there was no members. There was three people there, you know, so I seen a need for it, and I followed through with it, and I enjoy doing it. So that's why I want to be reappointed as well, so.
Okay, all right. Any questions, comments?
I'm the liaison for the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I think this is the first time you and I have actually got to see each other in person. Usually it's, one of us is on virtual, that's about it. So it's good to, first of all, it's good to actually see you in person. And he's also been very, you know, active and participating in what they do. And again, thank you for serving all those, you know, seeing the need and being willing to step forward as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? I, myself, I'd like to thank you as well for your volunteering for the community and your serving. And is there anything you feel the Town Council can do to support the ZBA anymore, or?
Not much more than it's already been, besides lack of members, of course, and that's in the people, I guess, so.
We have been working on that, and thankfully tonight we have a lot of interviews. This is, normally we're lucky if we have one or two interviews in a meeting, so. When I saw the list of applicants for tonight, I was very pleased to see we've got this many people looking to volunteer. We will be voting on your reappointment on next Tuesday.
All right, excellent. Love your night.
Thank you. You too. And next up is Item 3D. Erin Akenbach is seeking appointment to the Agriculture Commission. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce her last names, and feel free to correct me if I was wrong.
It's Akenbach.
Akenbach?
Yes.
Okay. There are currently two regular terms and three alternate vacancies available. The regular term would run from three years. Available terms would run either from November 1, 2020, through October 31, 2023, or November 1, 2022, through October 31, 2025. And I believe you are seeking appointment as a regular member?
Right.
Okay. So I won't even bother reading off the terms for the alternate members. So can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve on the Agriculture Commission?
So currently, I live on a historic farm in Killenly and been there nine years now, and I finally feel like maybe I have a minute to do something else rather than just work on the farm. And in the past year, I've taken a job as an urban farmer in Providence for a nonprofit flower farm. And I kind of become very aware of the power of volunteering and working with the community. So I thought that it was probably about time. I'm Jim Burleygame's neighbor, and years ago, when I moved in, he was a very, very kind and helpful person, and he encouraged me then to come, and I just, I didn't have the time. But now, I think that I would like to try.
Okay, all right. Well, we appreciate that. I will open up to any council members that have questions or comments.
Hi, I'm the agricultural liaison for the Town Council, and we have a lot of new blood and really smart people, and I'm glad that you're coming out. It's gonna, I think you'll really enjoy it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now, do you have any questions for us?
Feeling pretty good about it.
Okay, all right.[683.01][683.01](Laughter) I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of the town and the council members for looking to serve the community. We will be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up is Item 3E. Holly Blade is seeking appointment to the Board of Rec. She is seeking appointment as an alternate member for the Board of Rec. There is currently one alternate vacancy available. The alternate term would run for two years and would run as follows, from March 1, 2022, through February 25, 2024. Thank you for coming, and can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve on the Board of Rec?
Sure. I have been running the theater program for Killenly Parks and Rec for the last seven years as a volunteer, and I spend a lot of time in the building and with the people who are there, and I think that what the program's offer to the community is really important. And now with a new director and some new ideas going, I think it's the best time to join and try to branch out a little.
Thank you. The other thing, too, is the new community center. Once that project is done, we will have a much bigger theater.
Yes, we're excited.[773.44][773.44](Laughter)
Opportunity to do a lot bigger programs.
We're hoping.
I will open up for council members. Any questions, comments from council?
Well, Holly's jumping in before she even needs to. She was very active this weekend. She was helping alongside me, bringing in some North Pole friends this weekend, so. But yeah, it's always, I mean, Rec Commission, along with Conservation, is a very, very busy, very active program, so.
Thank you. And do you have any questions for us?
No.
Any other council members have any questions? I'd like to say thank you for coming forward and looking to serve the community. It's always great when people look to give themselves and give their time to volunteer. And we will be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Next item up is 3F. Claudette Rogers is seeking appointment to the Conservation Commission. Ms. Rogers is interested in being appointed as a regular member of the Conservation Commission. You're aware that there are currently only alternate member vacancies available. There are two alternate terms. One would run from November 1, 2020, through October 31, 2022. The other one is November 1, 2021, through October 31, 2023. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve on a Conservation Commission?
Well, I've done a couple of the bus tours with Donna, lots of them, and she roped me in back in the day when my son was in Boy Scouts, leading us down Cat Hollow, showing us all the stuff that was down there, and the old mills and how they worked, and how to clean up, and yeah, I just, it's in my heart to serve the town, I guess.
So I know this did say, did mention it, but you are aware, you're okay with being an alternate member? I know you wanted to be a regular, okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to.
Donna thought there was a regular position available. That's why.
Okay, all right. I will open up for comments, questions. I believe, Mr. Grant, or Mr. Wood, you go first.
She's been to quite a few conservation meetings. She jumps right in. It's almost like she's a regular member. She feels comfortable, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
And you already know Donna, so you know she'll put you to work.
Yes, yeah.[962.44][962.44](Laughter)
And Donna's here right now with us there. I say this to everybody wanting to join there. She's a ball of energy, and she puts anybody to work. That's why I stay, keep my distance there, because I know she's gonna put me to work someday.[976.77][976.77](Laughter)
Do you have any questions for the council? Oh, sorry.
So what is your vision for the town as we see many towns with a lot of growth and losing their character and becoming just, you know, another strip mall, you know, a bunch of developments?
No, no. I'm a tree hugger, you know that.[1001.94][1001.94](Laughter) No, I want to save the trees, save the stuff, and I just wanted to bridge the gap between the older generation and the younger generation. I see Donna struggling with, like, it's always great to do the bus tours, but I don't think enough of the community knows about it, because I know, like, my family and stuff would actually do it, but she puts it in the turpik buyer and stuff, and I have other ideas of getting the word out there of what they do, and just, Killenly has a ton of history, and I would just like that part of Killenly to shine as much as, you know, the Killenly Common shines that night, you know?[1053.01][1053.01](Laughter) Yeah, that's what I like.
Thank you.
I mean, as an alternate member, I mean, when I first started serving on boards and commissions, I was an alternate on public safety. I mean, and the alternates have just as much roles sometimes, and sometimes more active roles than the actual members sometimes. So I'm sure you will be very, very busy. You won't be just kind of sitting off in the corner somewheres.
I was fine with just being a public person there, too. Donna and them are very welcoming, you know, at all the meetings. So anybody in the public that wants to come and put their input in, it'd be greatly, you know, they definitely welcome you. It's not so nerve-wracking as all of this, but.[1101.32][1101.32](Laughter)
All right. Definitely want to thank you for coming forward, looking to volunteer for the community. Like I've said before, it's always great when people are willing to give themselves and volunteer. So we will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item up on the agenda is Item 3G. Daniel Ba is seeking appointment to the Historic District Commission. And you are interested in being appointed as either a regular member or alternate member of the Historic District Commission. Currently, there was one regular member and three alternate vacancies available. The regular term would run for five years. The available term runs from April 1, 2020, through March 31, 2025. The alternate terms run for three years. The available terms are from April 1, 2022, through March 31, 2025. Thank you for coming. Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve on the Historic District Commission?
Oh, yeah. I moved here 2009 with my two daughters, twin daughters, and I moved from Istanbul to Suzet, so. I admire this town a lot. This town is very good. They all left me now. I mean, one, ten, the school system is, they are the one I'll give a shout out to, like, the education system is so great. Even though they came from Africa right here in this town at the age of 10 or 11, they didn't have any problem at all. They get all the help they got. And as a single father, it doesn't affect me too much. I don't see, I wouldn't work too hard to be a single father because of the town. And now they're all grown up. The last person leave there, the younger twins is, what do you call it, Washington has a public defender, a twin sister, she's in the Air Force, Air Force officer, she's everywhere, anywhere now. So I admire this town. It's a very good town, and the school system is the one I, that I pay like respect very well. And I live in there, I bought a historical house here. Even I went to the historical building here, they don't even know too much about my house, and I figured out too many things how myself. I love this town, and when I received a mail that this opportunity, I was like, oh, it's cool. When you're in the kitchen, you don't go home empty and starving. So I'd rather be in the kitchen and do something to help the town, you know? So I love this town and the things you guys are doing. It's a very great town. So I think I have to be part of it.
Thank you for that. And it's always good to hear when people have good experiences in town. And I'd like to thank you for coming forward to volunteer for the community. It's like I've said before, it's great when people are willing to give themselves. And I will open up to other council members for any questions, comments. Mr. Wood?
So I know the next few interviews are all Historic District, and which is I joke about Donna and how she'll put people to work Historic District, they do the same thing. They're very good, they're very active, and they'll definitely, they'll keep you busy.[1333.44][1333.44](Laughter)
Thank you.
The Historic District also needs new members because I was the liaison, and sometimes they're waiting for somebody to come because they can't have a quorum.
Thank you.
So thank you for volunteering.
And I'm living in, like you said, a historic house. I had, my first home was built at the turn of the century, so there's all sorts of neat little things you find when you're having to maintain those houses.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm glad that you're definitely going into this eyes wide open, because you understand how much history there is, so.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of history in my house, you know? I found out that they lift the whole building up and build a new building on the height. I was like.
What?[1393.32][1393.32](Laughter)
So the third floor is the first floor, literally. So I was like, no. So I had opportunity, and the bathroom is leaking in this fifth, second floor, so I just cut the whole she rose size, and you can see all the evidence there. That means it's true. You can see all the basement pipe, like, you have a whole pipe and all this, you know? Oh, that was weird, because like, over 100 years ago, they lift the whole building and build a new building on that.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, that is crazy.
That's very interesting.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council? Do you have any questions for us?
I don't know.
Okay, all right. I want to thank you again for coming forward, looking to volunteer for the community, and we will be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next one, 3H. Jane Bullock is seeking appointment to the Historic District Commission. And I had previously read off the dates and terms for the different vacancies, and just find where we are in here. And you're seeking appointment as a regular member of the Historic District Commission?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I will ask, because I know the next person who's interviewing is also seeking appointment as a regular member, would you be okay with an alternate member if that was the direction the council chose?
Yes, that's fine, sure. And I do have to apologize for my husband. He's, he's not, he was under the weather. He wasn't feeling that he could come tonight, so.
Okay.
I have to apologize.
Okay, no problem. All right, so can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking to serve?
Sure. Well, I'm seeking it because I received a letter which solicited my interest in the commission, and I thought it would be a good way to get involved with the community. I'm a retired teacher, so anything that involves education is of interest to me. My husband and I bought the house in 2010, and it was in very bad shape. We've gutted the whole thing. We've put a lot of effort into it, a lot of money into it. It's been a labor of love, and we've really learned to, totally different from anything I ever owned before, a historic home, it was built in 1865. Did a little research on the original owners at the Historical Society, and it continues to be of interest to me, and I'm very happy that we did this. It's been a good experience, so. It's of interest, and I'd like to serve my community however I can, and I'm willing to give it a try.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Well, thank you for coming forward. And like I said before, I always thank everyone who's looking to volunteer and serve their community. So I will open up to council members. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I want to thank you again. I mean, it's always great when we have people looking to give back to the community. And as, looking at the amount of people who are here tonight to volunteer, I was totally blown away when I saw the list of people looking to volunteer and serve the communities. So we will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Okay, all right.
Jane, if you can, just let your husband know that we'll reach out to him to see if we can reschedule him for January.
Yes, I will do that, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll now move on to the agenda. We're gonna skip over Item 3I, as Mr. Bullock wasn't able to attend, so we will move on to 3J. Paul Archer is seeking appointment as a regular member to the Inland Wetlands Water Course Commission. There are currently four regular member and two alternate vacancies available. The regular terms run for three years. The available terms would run as follows, from May 1, 2022, through April 30, 2025, and there are two vacancies with that timeframe, or May 1, 2020, through April 30, 2023, and there are two vacancies within that timeframe. Welcome, thank you for coming. And can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve on the commission?
Sure, I know, I'm a, I own a professional land surveying service over in Brooklyn, have been in business for over 30 years in the business, so I've not only presented in front of the commission, I've presented in front of all the wetlands commissions in all the neighboring towns. So I feel I could give a little bit back to this community that I've lived in for 20-plus years. And I know the Wetlands Commission is really in dire need of members, and they've reached out to me to see if I'd be willing to do it, so I am willing.
That is great. I know that is something that we've been struggling with lately is trying to fill the vacancies on the Wetlands Commission. And someone with your background and your experience, and your experience, I see you could be a very valuable asset to the Inland Wetland Water Course Commission.
Thank you.
And I will open up to council members. Questions, comments? Mr. Grandowski?
This is good.
Thank you.
They say, well, we need, we're in our streets to get that position. It's hard time getting the board.
Yeah.
Well, it's been a long time.
Thank you.
I'm sure Sandy is watching, and she's probably doing cartwheels right about now, so. I'm very, I'm always impressed by the people that come forward for the different boards and commissions have a real knowledge and desire and passion for the areas that they, and you don't normally, some towns have, don't have that. And we're very, very blessed here with people that have the knowledge and the experience and want to, and then want to volunteer. So thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay. I'd like to say again, thank you for coming forward. It's always great when we have people looking to volunteer and serve their community. We will be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday. If we could vote on it sooner, we would.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda, next item up is 3K. Sean Regan is seeking appointment to the Northeast District Department of Health. There's currently one regular member and one alternate member vacancy available. The regular term runs for three years. The available term runs as follows: May 1st, 2022 through April 30th, 2025. Not, as the agenda says, it's not 202025. Mr. Regan is interested in being appointed as a regular member. Welcome. Just want to thank you for coming forward, and can you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking appointment?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for having me. I'm relatively new to the area. A year and a half, we moved here from Rhode Island, because we fell in love with the area. We used to do recreational stuff out here all the time. So we fell in love with the area, found a house, bought it, and we love it out here. And for the past, well, for the first year, I've been looking for some way to help somewhere and volunteer. Past life's in Rhode Island, I was, my post commander, I was the state commander for the state of Rhode Island for AM Vets, and, you know, that's Rhode Island. So I moved to Connecticut and looked for something else, looking for something, some other way I can, I can help out the community in any way I could. And I was approached by Heidi Clifford. She was vacating the spot. So I attended a meeting at the NDDH, and thought, I said, hey, this is great. I could do this. I would love to do it. So that's what got me interested in it.
All right, thank you. As I said before, it's great when people come forward to volunteer for their community, and I want to thank you for coming forward. I will open up for any questions, comments?
I also served, I was actually chair for that board for a number of years. There's, you learn a lot. There's, everybody thinks it's just food inspections, but it's a whole different ball of wax, and a lot of their, a lot of their funding is grant and jumping through federal and state hoops to, just to try to get, you know. You learn real fast about the 10 essential health services.
Yes.
So I'm, it's a great commission and a great board to sit on, so thank you for being willing to.
My pleasure, my pleasure. And, you know, my background, I'm a senior project manager for a development company, so I deal with budgets from 60 to 100 million dollars on every job. So I'm very good with that kind of it. Deal with all kinds of boards of health, local boards of health on all sorts of communities, so I'm daily familiar with dealing with them anyway. So I thought it would be a really good fit for me to go in and help out. Like I said, I attended the meeting, liked what I saw, so I said, this is for me. I'm gonna try it.
Okay, all right. Well, definitely thank you for your interest. Is there any other comments, questions? Any questions for us?
Not at this time.
Okay, all right. Well, again, want to thank you for coming forward, and we will be voting on your appointment next Tuesday.
Okay, appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Moving on to the agenda, next item up is item 4, citizen statements and petitions. Ms. Calori, did we have anything submitted?
We didn't have any submitted in writing.
Okay, thank you. At this time, if anyone would like to make public comment, please come up to this podium, state your name and address. Just realize, any public comments tonight have to be related to items on the agenda, which would be any of these interviews.
Right. Donna Bromwell, 699 Bailey Hill Road, I've been on conservation for over 20 years. And so I'm here to support the appointment of Claudette Rogers to our Conservation Commission. She's gonna be a good energy person, and it's good to, will be good to have enough people to have a quorum on a regular basis.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. Item 5, old business, we have none. Item 6, new business, we have none. Item 7, executive session, we have none. Item 8, adjournment. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. Motion has been made by Mr. Grandowski, seconded by Mr. Wood. All those in favor, say aye. 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 Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is adjourned.